Good morning and welcome to the first meeting of 2025. This is our regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any staff announcements?
Good morning, Chair. This is Brett Sampson, Planning Director. I just have one announcement. At the next Board of Supervisors meeting on the 28th, we'll be conducting a workshop to take input from the board on our short-term rental ordinance. It's just going to be a general workshop to take direction from the board and certainly from the public as well. So that's my only announcement for today.
That's kind of exciting.
Yeah.
And no agenda changes today? Okay, then this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the Planning Commission on an item within the subject purview of the Planning Commission but not on the agenda today. Is there anybody who would like to speak? And anybody online? Nobody online? Nope. Then we will open and close the public comment period and move on to the consent agenda, which consists only of the meeting minutes of December 12th. Is there any member of the public or the commission who wish to remove this from the consent agenda for further discussion? Nope.
I would move that we adopt those.
One second.
All in favor? Aye. No. Any opposed? Nope. Then it passes three, one, one. One absent, one abstention. Thank you. I'm gonna, I should write those, the order of the numbers down, but Annette's gonna correct it for me anyway. Okay, we can move on to our regular agenda. Item 12024-022 zoning amendment. Oh, no, wrong, wrong item. Item 12023-028 zoning amendment for Sender's Market. And Catherine, you're up.
Good morning. My name's Catherine Stephanie.
Do we have it on the screen?
Oh, she needs to share her.
You have to, do you know how to share?
Give me one second. I apologize. My name's Catherine Stephanie. I'm a planner too at the Calaveras County Planning Department, and I will be presenting planning project 2023-028, a zoning amendment for Sender's Market this morning. The application proposes to amend the zoning of Assessor Parcel Number 036-005-009, shown in red at the bottom of the screen, from R1, single-family residential, to C1, local commercial, to accommodate a proposed 4,500 square foot expansion to Sender's Market, which is located on the adjacent C1-zoned parcel, APN 036-006-027. The approximate area of the expansion is shown in blue on the screen. The applicant has also stated that they intend to do a lotline adjustment between the parcels to facilitate the expansion, and the application is being processed under the Calaveras County Zoning Code adopted August 15th of 2024. The subject parcel is located at 8183 Garibaldi Street, and the adjacent parcel is located at 8151 Garibaldi Street immediately to the north. The subject parcel is currently zoned R1 and developed with a barn used for storage. The proposed C1 zone is meant to provide areas for small-scale retail and service businesses to meet the needs of the local community. Permitted uses in the C1 zone include retail and service businesses, offices, and accommodations, and the barn predates the zoning code and is a non-conforming use. The project site is in the Mountain Ranch Community Plan area, and a general plan amendment isn't required as the proposed C1 zone is compatible with the current historic center Rezoning the subject parcel to C1 would be consistent with the surrounding land uses as the project site is in the downtown Mountain Ranch area, which consists mainly of residential parcels and is interspersed with businesses, including the post office, Sender's Market, a gas station, and a small inn. The application was routed for 30 days, and no comments or concerns were received from county departments or other public agencies. The notice of public hearing was also routed to property owners within 300 feet, and no responses were received at that time either. The applicant is requesting the zoning amendment to allow an expansion to Sender's Market, and the zoning amendment would reduce the current five-foot setback required for C1 parcels adjacent to R1 parcels to zero feet, and the zoning amendment would also facilitate a lotline adjustment. The subject parcel is developed with a barn built in the early 1900s that's been used for storage for many years, and it can't currently be used commercially as it can't meet the building code standards, and redevelopment potential onsite is limited by the need for a well and septic system on that 0.15 acre parcel. There are no alterations proposed to the barn at this time, but should someone propose to alter or demolish it after a decision is made, they would be required to comply with any ordinances in place at that time. The project is found to be consistent with the general plan, including General Plan Policy LU-5, which encourages a strong and diversified economic base through the creation and retention of businesses and industry, as well as Land Use Goal 1.2, which supports growth in and around existing communities while protecting and enhancing those communities. Additionally, there are no Mountain Ranch Community Plan policies relevant to this Pursuant to CEQA guidelines, an initial study and negative declaration was prepared finding less than significant impacts. It was available for public review from October 23rd to November 25th of 2024, and no comments were received regarding environmental impacts, so no changes were necessary to the mitigated negative declarat-- or I'm sorry, to the negative declaration. In conclusion, staff finds the proposed rezone to C1 consistent with the general plan and compatible with surrounding land uses and zoning. The project as proposed will not have a significant effect on the environment, and the proposed zone is consistent with the current uses on the project site.
And that concludes my presentation. Any questions? Does anybody have any questions for Catherine?
Well, yeah. Good morning. What indications do we have that the actual owner of the property that be rezoned joins in this request in some way?
They've signed both the application and the indemnification agreement, authorizing the application to be submitted to our department.
So it's clear to you that--
Yes.
--they are part of this process?
Yes.
Do you know how close the buildings, the barn's walls are to the current property line?
I'm not sure at this time. A survey was not requested for this application showing the specifics of the property lines in relation to the existing buildings.
So it could be that with the expansion, the new wall of the Sender's Market business will be right up against the barn's wall?
I actually don't believe that that is a possibility because you can't do a lotline adjustment, which I saw was referred to in here, that creates a noncompliant condition with an existing building.
Yeah, so for example, if the barn has an eve, that eve can't go over that property line, so--
That eve can't be within three feet of that property line, or any closer than it currently is if it is less than the allowable--
Depending on--
Depending on what they consider that building when all is said and done.
So relying on your expertise then, the, with the, when everything is said and done with a property line adjustment, et cetera, the barn's wall will be at least three feet plus the eve away from the, from the new development?
You'd have to look at all the exceptions and everything, but you're not going to be able to put it right up against the building. It's an odd situation because the barn is not an accessory structure to another building, and I didn't look up the specifics of it, but that's the job of the building department and the Public Works Department in surveyor when they approve the lotline adjustment.
And as a part of that, I'm asking you the questions now. As a part of that process, does the building officer look into the capabilities of providing fire protection to wooden structures such as--
They can't be required to change the existing barn, which is an existing, pre-existing, nonconforming building. However, the new building's wall, if it's a zero lotline, will have fire protective measures and parapets required as part of that project.
Commissioner Latch, I did speak to the building official earlier about, about this situation, and the information I received is that there will be more than likely very enhanced fire protection measures as part of the new building, both for the interior walls of that new building and the exterior walls of that building. They'll have to meet a certain fire rating because they're getting close to that barn. The barn won't be, you know, part of that analysis, but the new retail expansion will be subject to a very enhanced--
So hopefully, there won't be a burning wall right next to the wooden barn, is it?
Correct. It would, it would have to read, meet a certain fire rating for a certain duration of hours, probably two-hour rating, but I don't quote beyond the two hours--
Right.
But it's a very enhanced building, and it's far more expensive than standard construction.
It depends on if they put, so they're, they asked for a zero lotline situation, so I'm assuming it's going to be right on the lotline. So the only question really is how do you maintain that wall? But that's a whole different question, so it's, it will likely be a block wall on that, and it will extend above and protect everything, and the roof that comes into it will have to be protected at that area.
The roof--
But I'm not, I'm not doing an analysis of the building code here, so conceptually, that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, conceptually. Thank you for the concept.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
And look who's here, somebody who can actually answer those questions, so Doug, would you like to come on up, because Tim has some questions for you?
Welcome.
I was in it, I, my last meeting ran late, so I apologize for the delay.
Perfect timing.
My, my concern is with the, with the fire protection possibilities--
Okay.
--with this, as far as the, we don't know exactly how close to the existing property line the wooden wall of the barn is, and so we don't know if this, we don't know what, what conditions your office might put on the, the construction that's, that's considered for the extension of the Sender's Market that will permit at least some access to, to firefighters if they are trying to put out a burning wooden barn.
Okay. If I understand this correctly, we're doing with a zero lotline. The building code is very clear on the, the fire requirements and the fire resistance requirements of walls based on the proximity to a property line. The intent is, you don't know what's gonna be on the other side, so it, we wouldn't place any restrictions or any changes on the barn. The barn is a barn, it's been there, okay? And who's to say they might build something, you know, later on? So the wall in question is going to have a specific fire rating, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, it's gonna be a two-hour. My understanding from the construction is it's gonna be a concrete. I didn't think that was gonna be wood. So if it's, if it's masonry and it's designed appropriately, I would expect a fire rating designed from, for fire protection from both sides. So that's gonna add protection to the barn because it's gonna be designed to resist fire from the, the store itself or the barn. Typically, there's a parapet requirement, which means there's, that's basically a defensive position for firefighters if they have to get on the roof of Sender's to attack the fire on the barn. They have a, they have a, you know, a defensive position to hold. In addition, that parapet prevents radiant heat from the neighboring barn from affecting the roof line of the, of the building. Now, they can opt for removing that parapet, but once again, that, that adds the fire protection to the roof construction. So you're, you're gonna see a robust fire resistance on that wall, but just by placing it on that property line. In addition, there won't be any penetrations allowed, no doors, no windows, anything like that. That's gonna be a solid wall.
So assuming that the, that right now, the, the eaves of the barn are right over the property line, and I'm not sure, we'll, we'll find out when we talk to the applicant about the lot, intended lotline adjustment, but assuming that the eaves are right over the property line, would there be, and if firefighters are on the, the Sender's building, would there be any way to, for them to direct water between the buildings?
Well, I can't speak on the position of a fireman because I don't know how they would attack that. I mean, I would--
Would there be a gap, would there be any required gap between the eaves of the barn and the, the new wall?
That's a good question. I, that, that's the first time I've--
Okay.
--ever heard of that. I just say that typically, you don't let buildings overhang other buildings. However, the fire protection requirements of the new construction are intended to protect that building from the radiant heat of an adjacent building, and my thoughts are, you know, the Fire Department has an attack method to arrest any of that radiant heat. There typically is a separation between the two structures that would be required, but that's minimal, and that's just for ventilation to prevent moisture accumulation and deterioration. So typically though, with, with a, you know, two or greater hour fire resistance on that wall, if the neighboring building is on fire and there is that prolonged radiant heat, it's not gonna cause severe damage to the adjacent structure. Best intent.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Because we know they're requesting a property line adjustment, boundary line adjustment, they're not going to be allowed to move that boundary line underneath the eve--
No, correct, correct.
So that surveyor is going to prevent the situation that you are speculating about.
Yeah, the situation would be highly unlikely.
Great, thank you, and thanks for showing up.
My pleasure.
Great timing.
So there, you got it from the, the official word. Anything else?
Not for Catherine.
Commissioner Robey, do you have any questions for Catherine?
No.
No? So is the applicant here, and would--
Yes.
Of course. Would you like to come on up?
Yes, of course. I'm slow and I'm old. Our son runs the store. I do, I'm Polly Sender from Mountain Ranch, and our son runs this store, but he's gone on a vaca-- well, not a vacation, he's gone to an Ace Hardware convention, so he's not here and able to come to this meeting. But he wants this property line adjustment in order to protect the store from that warehouse. We tried to move it, we, we applied to the people in town and tried to move it because we think it's a horrible fire hazard. And as you may know or may not know, we lost our store to a fire about 50 years ago from, from a business. Built, you know, our building was attached to a little pizza parlor, and they left the pizza oven on, and it caught the whole place on fire. But anyway, because we're well acquainted with fire, we want to make every protection we can. So I, I really don't have information about building. I really don't know, except that they want to be able to use the space behind this for, well, a lot of it's for protection. A lot of what they're doing is trying to protect our store from the possibility of a fire.
And get some additional cold case storage.
Yes, and we'll also be able to expand our, our milk case, so, yes, so we, we have the multiple things going on with this lotline adjustment application.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Are there any questions for Ms. Sender's?
Yeah, so, so what, what is your, I know we don't have the lotline adjustment before us today, but just what is, what are your intentions for the lotline adjustment?
It's to move it over a short distance, but the lotline adjustment, the purpose of it is just to be able to build a proper fire prevention structure, but also to extend the, the cold case that we have and put some more equipment on that end of the building, refrigeration equipment. But that would be on the backside of the building, not the front. But it would allow, a lotline adjustment would allow us better access to that area.
So the lotline adjustment would be away from the barn, or--
Toward the barn.
Toward the barn?
Yes.
Okay. And there being no survey, I understand, nobody really knows exactly how far the barn is from its, from the current property line.
Right.
And so the extension along what I consider the side of the barn, which, the, the side of your current building--
Yes.
Since your current building is set back from the street to allow for parking--
Right.
Will the extension follow the line of the current building so that--
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would not extend into the parking lot at all.
Yeah, that's, well, but the--
But the property line, I mean, the, the property where the barn sits, the front porch of the barn extends into the street way more than the store does. I mean--
Yeah, that's, that's, that was my concern, is that, that just visually speaking, it's nice to see part of the side of the barn--
Yes.
--that extends past your current building line, and that--
That building line won't change.
Thank you.
That front building line.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And no other questions or--
You go ahead and take a seat, I think.
Okay.
You guys have any questions?
Okay.
We'll call you back up if we need you. So is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item? Doesn't look like it, no one online. Okay, open and close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Would you guys like to take a look at the resolution now and see if there's any little wording tweaks necessary?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna assume that you have at least one or two things that you'd like to bring up.
One or two, not many. The, on the first page of the resolution, since the public did not take part in this conversation, we just need to, in the last whereas, we need to take out the words "and" the public. And on page two of the, of the resolution, under the Evidence paragraph, under Finding Two, so up toward the top of the page, I would take out the, the last sentence that deals with a lotline adjustment. I think this is more a, an informational item that, that it was good to have in the staff report, but I, I don't, I don't think the commission needs to be talking about what the future intentions are of the applicant, and I wouldn't want to have any sort of implication that, that we're endorsing any sort of lotline adjustment at this point.
So to clarify, it's the last two sentences of that paragraph the applicant intends to--
Yeah, it's the last two sentences. Then on the, the next paragraph, since we have a new historic structures ordinance has been passed and will soon become effective, it seems to me that the language starting, it's the third sentence of that paragraph that starts with "on February 13th, 2024", and goes into the, the urgency ordinance, that that discussion down to the last sentence in that paragraph could be taken out, which would leave the last sentence saying, "Should someone propose to alter or demolish, demolish the barn after a determination is made on the proposed project, they would be required to comply with any cultural or historic resources ordinance in place at that time." I think that takes care of the, of the subject nicely. And that's what I have--
What date is the new historic ordinance go into effect?
February 13th.
So I think we need to leave it alone. It's not actually in effect, the new one, yet.
Well, but the last sentence takes care of, of whatever's in effect.
I understand, but, but I don't think there's a problem with, with what's here about the urgency ordinance.
No, it's just excessive wording.
It shows that they took this into consideration.
Okay, that's, that's fine with me.
And the urgency ordinance is still in effect until the new ordinance goes into effect.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what I have.
Does anybody else have anything?
I agree with your point.
I would also just like to say that the Sender's business is, is so central to our, to our district and our county, and I'm confident that this whole project will be done in a responsible way, as Sender's always seems to do.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're ready for the recommendation.
All right. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the negative declaration and adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2025-001 as amended, recommending the Board of Supervisors amend the zoning of APN 036-005-009 from single-family residential to general commercial as shown in Exhibit A of said resolution.
I move we adopt it as amended.
One second.
All in favor? What was that?
She needed the second on the mic. I second again.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None, and with one absent commissioner. Congratulations. Now you're onto the Board of Supervisors.
How's your dad? How's your mom?
And we will take up our second item. And we will take up our second item, Project twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two, the very long incoming Copperopolis Community Plan General Plan Amendment. Mr. Maurer, our special projects administrator, will lead that discussion.
Good morning, Peter Maurer, Special Projects Administrator. As the chair mentioned, this is the long awaited, um, Copperopolis Community Plan, uh, General Plan Amendment. Brief overview, like to go through, um, some minor edits and corrections. I'm sure there will be some discussion on some of the policy language, um, and there's a number of people from the, the public that are here to speak on this item as well. So as you recall, when we adopted the general plan in two thousand nineteen, um, many of the communities, but not all, had, had, um, community plan, um, policies included in the community planning element of the general plan. Two communities in particular were identified as, um, really having a desire to be included, uh, Valley Springs, which a plan was adopted several years ago now, and Copperopolis were those two that were specifically, you know, identified by the commission and the board as, you know, wanting to be included. So, um, Copperopolis is unique, uh, to the county in that it's sort of a consolidation of several different communities, uh, as opposed to most of the other communities where there's sort of a historic core and construction is built around it. In my opinion, Copperopolis is really sort of three different communities together. You've got the old historic community, you've got the Lake Tullock area residential development only before, you've got the new commercial development at Town Center, Town Square, and you've got the newer subdivisions off of, um, Little John Road. And I think the real challenge with this plan is how do you tie all of that together? And that is what I think that the community itself has been struggling with for decades now. I think some of the early, um, you know, work on a community plan probably started back in the nineteen nineties, um, and there have been countless, um, meetings and hearings held, uh, on how to develop a plan. Before the meeting, someone asked me, "How many planning commission meetings have I attended during my tenure here as well as my, my career?" I can't count them. Uh, it probably equals the amount of public meetings that were held, uh, for the Copperopolis Community Plan. One of the big differences from when this started to where we are now is the county's general plan, um, basically had standalone community plans, uh, that had its own set of policies, um, rather than the general plan as it stands today, which applies to all the communities. And the, the plan policies that are included in the community planning element are in addition to all of the other policies that apply countywide. And so this has certainly scaled back significantly from some of the early draft plans that were developed, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, uh, where it was a standalone document. This will be included in the general plan and all of the other general plan policies will apply regardless of, of these policies here. So the, um, my successor and predecessor, um, had worked with, you know, the community, you know, several, uh, community meetings were held, a lot of policies were proposed. When I came back in April of last year, I, you know, took the documents and, you know, been prepared, uh, met with community members and looked at, well, a lot of these policies that were being proposed are already in the general plan, and so they really didn't need to be repeated. There is a little bit of repetition. I think that part of that is just simply this is something that is really important to this community, and that's why, and we've done that a little bit with some of the other, uh, community planning, uh, documents as well, where there's a little bit of repetition, but it sort of tends to focus the attention on the, these are the, um, the desires of this community and how they would like to see their community developed over time. So I think we're at a point where we're all pretty much in agreement that this is what, um, you know, the community of Copperopolis would like to see how future development were, uh, is to occur. I do have a few very minor edits, and then there are a couple of issues that probably need to be discussed with, with the public as well as the commission. If we turn to the draft, um, plan itself on page two, um, in the first paragraph, there's a reference to Town Square and Copper Town Square, and they're sort of used interchangeably, but I think in this document we should just, um, be consistent. So on the second to last line in the first paragraph where it says Copper Town Square, that should just read Town Square. Further down on that second page, um, there's a reference to Lake Tullock in the eighteen fifties, that should be nineteen fifty, or nineteen fifties.
I, I questioned that. I thought, wow, I didn't realize.
The construction of the dam was completed in nineteen fifty-eight, so that's, you know. Turning the page, um, I did receive some comments, um, or Brett received some comments from Commissioner Ladish, which he forwarded on to me, under the land use policies, CPC one point three, uh, suggested inserting, um, local in the middle line as reflected in local state and federal standards, now that we have a local ordinance, that makes sense. Two different policies, two point two and three point five, um, have the word require, and it was suggested that it be support, and that's probably a policy discussion we want to have, so I'm not making any recommended changes at this point in time, but we should probably discuss that in this hearing. And then on page, um, five of the document, uh, policy five point six, um, community members pointed out that, um, this is actually in Yosemite Community College District. They suggest that we keep both, um, you know, Yosemite and San Joaquin Delta, um, Community College District. I don't know, I think we probably should just replace it with Yosemite, um, unless there is some provision that I'm unaware of where the adjacent Community College District could develop a satellite campus in another district. It wouldn't make sense to me, but, um, I'm not familiar with how community college districts function and whether or not there's an ability to, um, put a satellite campus in, within a different district from one district to another. So my recommendation on that, we just change, uh, San Joaquin Delta to Yosemite. I also have a number of changes and edits to the, um, resolution, but we can address those as we get to that point. So, um, at this point, if you have any questions, um, I can entertain those, otherwise, um, turn it over to the public for their comments.
Any questions for Peter? No?
I do, um, the, will your suggested changes to the resolution, will they, uh, include references to the government code sections that were, that-
Yes.
Indicate that we needed them?
Yes.
Fine, we'll deal with that then. Great. That's it.
That's it, okay. Since there is no applicant, I guess we're just going to let the public come up and-
The county is the applicant, actually.
So, is there any member of the public here to speak to this item today? Come on up. Talk to us.
Good morning, Deana McAfee, and I am a longtime Copperopolis resident and one of the many folks who worked on, one of the many previous, um, versions of the copper , uh, community plan. So I don't know if it's, uh, appropriate, but can I ask, um, Mr. Maurer two questions?
Sure.
Um, one would be, and the edits that you mentioned on page two, um, referring to the Town Square, so what is the decided termination that will be used?
Town Square unless someone thinks that Copper Town Square should be better.
I think it's commonly referred to as the Copper Town Square by a large majority.
I don't have a preference. Other people have said they refer to it as Town Square, so one or the other, it doesn't really matter.
Town Square is fine, but as we know, um, I think it would just be important to not name it anything owner-specific, because as we know, things change, and if this is intended as a living document, then we would probably want to refer to it as something as neutral as possible. And then my second question is, you stated that you reviewed this draft with, um, several residents of Copperopolis. Was that a community meeting or was it one-on-one reviews? Uh, there's several of us who have been waiting for the, the next review based on the last meeting held by, uh, former director Elliot, and now we're at resolution stage.
She got my question.
Um, no, we did not hold any subsequent community-wide meeting. Uh, it was just sort of one-on-one conversations I had with, you know, several, um, people that had reached out to me.
Okay, thank you. Just, just curious if we missed something. In the community vision, so in the former drafts, and I guess I'm directing this to the board, um, in the last, I guess it was year and a half when the community plan was, um, brought up again, two of the, um, probably strongest elements that I heard, um, voiced by the community is, one, the, the lack of a true public community gathering area, um, and, let me address that real quick. So this document, I applaud Mr. Maurer for condensing, I think, what used to be twelve pages of a lot of, um, emotional input from the community into a, a, um, planning document, but it feels like some of the, um, what was important to the community members are lost in this version of the document, and we went from a passionate plea for, um, facilities and services to a cut-and-dry document that you ha, I, I felt like I had to dig between the lines to see that it referenced what we originally talked about. Two of those thing being, one, the lack of a true community senator, excuse me, center. It's one of, Copperopolis is kind of, it's seven or eight or thirteen different communities all within a, um, a general vicinity, and permanent residents have often looked for a way to bring all of those subdivisions together and to create a true Copperopolis community. When you see that, and I would like to see that maybe a little more strongly asserted in the community plan, uh, in the community vision, in that doc, in that paragraph of the community vision.
So where it says, "Support a development of a multipurpose community center with sports facilities, a playground, a dog park, a smoke-free and cooling shelter, senior citizen activities, and swimming," is that, does that capture the general idea?
Barely. And it says, "Support the development of," if we were to look at encouraging or to seek, how can we more actively pursue the development of not just a, yeah, I guess it is just a community center. Um, the, the smoke-free, um, verbiage probably isn't really necessary as we're in California. And believe it or not, meeting rooms.
I think they might be worried about wildfire smoke. I think that's-
Oh, so we reference wherever necessary. Um, this talks-
Condensation of a concept.
Oh, it's... And as a layperson reading this document, it's, it's not there, and maybe it's not, the vision and the passion of the community is not there, and maybe it's not intended to be in that specific policy, which I guess is why I suggested that we, um-
Get it in the vision.
Edit the, the community vision. I'd like to see the addition of meeting rooms. If, if we're going to be that specific about it, then let's put in meeting rooms. None of the nonprofit orgs have anywhere to go where they don't have to pay, and yeah, so huge benefit there.
Excuse me a second. What, where is the provision you were just reading from?
Me? Right here. CPC five point four.
Five point four. Thank you. So meeting rooms have-
I'm sorry, I distracted you from your point. Go on.
That's okay. Um, I think you get the gist of my passion on this topic. The second element that I didn't see here at all, um, and I think there will be some further discussion on this point, or at least comment on this point, would be the, um, lots and lots of conversations about the possibility of a connection between Copperopolis and the west side of New Maloney's reservoir. Regardless of which side, whether or not you believe that's something that's going to happen if we're looking at creating a copper community plan, then I think that we should at least, um, acknowledge that that's on the minds of many of us in the community. As the crow flies, Maloney's is only a mile and a half from Copper, but it's like a thirty-five, forty-minute drive from Copper to Tuttle Town, which is the, um, closest boat access for us. I think we recognize the, um, burden that is put on Lake Tullock to, to, um, as soon as the weather warms up, if you were to drive across the bridge right now, uh, you'd be lucky to spot maybe two fishing boats out there. So granted, that's when I like it the best, but, um, those of us that live here full-time don't even venture out to Tullock, um, in the warm weather months, which is a shame considering that it's my backyard. So again, my point being, um, I think that it's really important that we somehow recognize that potential access to New Maloney's in some way in our community plan, if this is the document that's going to guide us into the future. I think I have one last point. Maybe. And that is in the traffic and circulation section of the, um, current document. I'm not sure, and again, maybe I'm being a little bit too specific, um, but as, there is opportunity for continued growth in Copper, I think we need to consider, and whether or not this is the right document, I'm not sure, but we need to put some consideration into the traffic on, oh, oh, Burns Ferry Bridge, um, as well as Highway Four. Now, just outside of our, um, county line, Highway Four picks up and is, it's an easy drive, but if we continue to look at residential and, um, commercial growth in Calaveras County, then we need to, you know, how do we work with Cal Trans- then we need to, you know, how do we work with Caltrans to improve the rest of Highway 4, which I drive several times a month and it's just harder and harder. So again, under traffic and circulation, do we need to consider verbiage regarding longer-term improvement of Highway 4 and most definitely improvement of Oberon's Ferry? In addition to that, as we know, based on the, the arrow fire this past year, egress from Copper is extremely limited. Don't know if, where that sits on COGS list of things to address, but we were pretty much limited to evacuation over Oberon's Ferry Bridge, which we know is only two lanes and not easy to get through and Highway 4. And once, once they closed Highway 4 because of the fire, they were allowing traffic out, obviously no traffic in, but it could have just been so much worse. So again, if wildfires and circulation are issues that we should be addressing in this document, then I support that. And, okay, I think that's it. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share my two cents.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Russ Thomas and Mr. Maurer was talking about the long list of meetings that had gone into getting here today. Let me explain a little bit to some of you that I perhaps haven't met, but I, before coming to Calaveras County 30 years ago, I had the pleasure of serving on various boards and commissions in Stanislaus County, including seven years on the Planning Commission in Stanislaus County. After, shortly after coming here, I was selected by Terry Bailey to be on the Copperopolis Community Plan Advisory Committee. And because of all these various communities within our community and the fact that I lived out in the country, they voted to have me be the chairman of this group because I wasn't associated with anybody. And that proved to be a good choice, I think. But when I reflect back on the nine years that it took to, to do what we, what we thought was a good idea to develop a comprehensive plan for Copperopolis community, we sought the financial support of the Great Valley Center in, down in the valley, had connections with them, and we applied for a $50,000 grant to do a vision study for Copperopolis. And we had, we were given $40,000 with the provision that we needed to do $10,000 worth of buy-in within the community to prove our resolve and the authenticity of our objective. So I'm, I'm here to tell you that the $10,000 shortfall on the funding from the Great Valley Center, we, we did hire a prestigious firm from San Luis Obispo to help do the vision plan and had maybe up to five or six different community town hall meetings and were very well attended. And I'm, I'm sort of gratified in a way that, that these two paragraphs in the community vision, under the community vision and the document that I brought with me today, seems to be about the only thing that we got for our $50,000 investment. But I'm not here to complain too much about that. What I, what I would like to ask you to, to consider is that the fact that, let me, let's go over to the community vision and the last sentence in the first paragraph, "Lake Tullock will flourish as a safe and uncongested community attraction." We've found that to be totally untrue. It was then, 25 years ago, and it still is increasingly today. And so as a result of that, when I got on the Board of Supervisors, I began beating the drum for making a connecting link between Copperopolis and the west shore to, specifically to Texas Charlie Gulch. And lo and behold, the Bureau of Reclamation was doing their recreation management plan for the lake at that time. And when we first approached them, Board of Supervisors specifically approached them, they said, "No, we, we don't have any money for that. We have no interest in that." And so three different board resolutions, one signed by Bill, first by Bill Claudino, the second one following year by Steve Walensky, the third one signed by me as the board chair of imploring the Bureau of Reclamation to reconsider, and, and they did. But they did in a very, very small way, and I'm here today to ask you to do something for that objective in a very, very small way. The Bureau put in practically one sentence in their recreation management plan that said that, "We, we can't fund this, but we understand that there is a desire to have a road and if funds, outside funds can be found to do this, that we will have no objection or we will not object to that, the creation of that road." So if I could direct you to your public facilities, I'm recommending that, that we insert CPC 5.6 right after 5.5 and before this discussion of the Yosemite College District. But the, the following word wording would be, or recommended wording would be, "Explore the feasibility of a road that could provide a link from Copperopolis to the west shore of New Maloney's." Now, I know enough about planning that, that there is a great and justifiable sensitivity to the environmental impact report that might, obviously would be required for putting a road like that in. But simply saying that you explore the feasibility of a road, in my opinion, would not trigger any environmental impact expense at this point.
Excuse me, could you repeat your suggestion a little more slowly?
Okay. CPC 5.6 would read, "Explore the feasibility of a road that could provide a link from Copperopolis to the west shore of New Maloney's." And that would move that discussion of the Yosemite Community College District down to 5.7.
Okay, everything after connective link, please.
Say that again?
I've caught up as far as connective link. What's the rest of the?
Provide a link from Copperopolis to the west shore of New Maloney's. Now, I, I'm, I know that the county is strapped for funds. I know that, that if you, if you put wording in here that insisted that that happened, then it might trigger some unfortunate consequences to this document. I don't want to do that, but I, I mean, I've been working on this for 25 years. And that shortfall that I talked about in the funding, I, I wrote a personal check for $1,000 to pay that consultant to do, do the Copperopolis community plan, my fair share. And I, I have often thought about this, is I would invest another $1,000 if I could, before I die, drive on that road. And I, I think that that's a reasonable assumption. I mean, I'm, I'm going to last another 25 years or so. But anyway, as you read through this document, it, it talks about how we're, we're supposed to be concerned about improving infrastructure to support the economic growth within the community boundary, including roads, water systems and sewer systems. And as you may know, I, I represent CCWD now. And so the, I, it is not lost upon me what the benefits of an access to New Maloney's would provide for Copperopolis to take the pressure off of Lake Tullock. Lake Tullock, for those of you who might not know the proportionality, Lake Tullock is 1,200 acres surface. Maloney's is 12,000 acres surface. And I'm not, and nothing in this is proposing to put a marina. It's just simply the, the way that we proposed it and got the attention of the Bureau of Reclamation was that we would take the facilities at Tuttle Town and just shift them over. They had to be turned upside down and put over in Texas Charlie Gulch and it would be a road end for day use only. No camping, but, but anyway, that's my proposal and I hope that you will look with favor upon that. If you have any questions on...
What would you suggest, if anything, if we, if we were to do what your last suggestion was, what about the last sentence in the first paragraph of community vision about Lake Tullock? What would you suggest?
It, it might be a safe and uncongested community attraction if there was some other option available. But, you know, at the time that, that we were working on the community plan, there were few thousand lots in Copper Cove subdivision. Only nine, only 900 of them had been, no, I'm sorry, I got this wrong. 900 lots were remaining to be developed. And I, I've got a vote, you've got a vote. I haven't had my vote on Lake Tullock in 12 years. It's just, it's too risky. There's, there's collisions and there's craziness and stuff. And I, I would love to be able to hitch up to my boat, go out, and the road we're talking about is four miles long. We had the, the full cooperation of the property owner, Dr. Morrissey and his wife, at the time they were willing to do that. They had some land right at the intersection of, of the road that goes into their ranch. And they, they wanted to do a small commercial development there and the county said, "No way." Now, there, there is a sewer line there now and there's going to be a water connection that CCWD is putting in, so it, it wouldn't be any development that would be done at that intersection. I don't know whether it still would be conditional for them to approve the construction of the road, conditional upon them getting some zoning change there or not, but that's why I wanted to have the, the word, "Explore the feasibility." Some wiggle words. But I, I don't know how to answer this question. Maybe Peter could suggest something about that, that uncongested community attraction. It is far from uncongested.
Would you think Lake Tullock should flourish instead of will flourish?
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
I think what you're really looking for is a statement in there that says that, that there will be improved access to recreational opportunities at New Maloney's for the Copperopolis community.
And, and I would anticipate that...
That's your vision for what, what you'd like to see.
That's exactly right. But, and I, just to expand on that a little bit further, there will be voices in Angels Camp that will say, "Oh, no, we can't do that because that'll destroy the, the economic opportunities in Angels Camp." And I would submit to you that that's preposterous. Now, the Bureau of Reclamation made promises, the Department of Interior actually, but they made promises to the citizens of Calaveras County that there would be 3 million visitors to these recreation facilities on New Maloney's. And they never have gotten even a third of that. And, and that's kind of, it was a bait and switch. Some might call it a lie.
Well, I think it, your community vision can certainly be improved access to recreational opportunities and that can be an example of it.
And it, you know, that, there's a, the state has a mandate for increased housing and opportunities for housing and mixed uses and stuff. And this, this would be a fairly significant attraction for people to come to live and to work in Copperopolis if they could take their boat four miles to that, to that lake. Anyway, that's my plea. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak? Are you guys here to listen and nod? Anybody else? Going, going, gone? Nope, here you go.
Oh, my name is Ralph Copeland, Copperopolis. I've been working with the community plan for a few years now. I'd like to thank the board for considering this today. I'd like to thank Mr. Maurer for all his work. And I'd also like to thank both of you for including in the general plan the opportunity for Copperopolis to highlight the items that are important to Copperopolis from the general plan. We had multiple meetings held. There were multiple notifications regarding this plan. We just had to due diligence to follow up and see how this was going along because we had a vested interest, we being the Calaveras Planning Coalition and also Brenda, Nancy, and Janet here, working as residents of Copperopolis. It's a, it's very tough to say that we want to keep our rural atmosphere and also that we want to keep our foot in development. And we're not here to control development. We're here to make Copperopolis remain historical rather than rural. We're here to make Copperopolis the gateway to Calaveras County, to be partners with Valley Springs, who has a very detailed, very good community plan. So we basically have the one portion of Calaveras County, sort of like the gatekeepers, if you may say, for Calaveras County. And we don't want to see this overdeveloped. We don't want to see this as what I saw in San Jose Silver Creek Golf Course, just these particular expansions. But they're going to happen and, and I understand that. But again, we also want to keep Calaver, I mean Copperopolis, historical. Regarding this road to New Maloney's, the first time I ever heard of it after 25 years of living in Copperopolis was at one of these meetings. The circle of friends and associates and so forth I have in Copperopolis have made no mention of a need or want of a road to Maloney's. And it's my understanding that the BLM has specific language that will make it extremely difficult. So having this type of item, this detailed item, in our fishnet of a community plan, I think could be handled by our board, our supervisor, or maybe a group of citizens that come together and develop outside the community plan, this particular road, and present it to the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, the Building Department, whoever. I think that's about all I have. Oh, again with the housing, we got to make it affordable. We have to have affordable housing. And it's my understanding, and I've heard CB Development mention that it's too expensive to make affordable housing. And if we're going to have growth, we need homes, when I say affordable, I'm not talking about the homeless encampments. I'm talking about your firefighters, your doctors, your nurses, finding affordable homes, young families, people who want to stay, who go away to school and come back and want to stay and grow their, you know, their families, want to have an affordable house rather than get an inheritance from the grandparents or something. So to me... So to me, the language here gives us an opportunity for us to have affordable housing in Calaveras County, which is desperately needed. And we'll, you'll hear me when you have the short-term rental. You'll hear me talk again about affordable housing. But again, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and I appreciate all your time and efforts put into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Sterling, and I've been a resident of Diamond 20 in Copper for 25 years. And as Mr. Maurer stated, we did have several community town hall meetings. We worked collaboratively with the community and with the developer and with our Board of Supervisor. And as those of us who have done negotiations, we know that we're never going to get everything we want. So I feel like when the parties walk away where, you know, you feel pretty good about it, both sides, that we've done, you know, a pretty decent job. So I am glad that it's here finally, because as has been previously stated, it's been a long time coming. And I truly hope that the Planning Commission will approve it so we can then pass it on to the Board of Supervisors and actually get it finalized. And it is a living, breathing document, so it's not to say that, you know, things can't be amended and changed in the future. But I feel that this is a really good starting place and has a lot of good foundation for the community in Copper. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing.
We have some online public comments.
Is there someone online? Okay. I thought we didn't have anybody.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. I was thinking it was odd we hadn't heard from you.
Tom and Pacino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. I'm here on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition simply to support the recommendation in the staff report regarding the Copperopolis community plan. I'm also here to thank everybody who worked so hard for so long to get the Copperopolis community plan to this point. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else online? Mr. Hicks, would you like to speak? Mr. Hicks?
Yes, hi.
Yep.
Yeah, this is Tom Hicks from CB Development. We too support the plan. We think it's done a good job of narrowing it down to what it should be, a good vision document for future development in Copperopolis, so we're here to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Fletcher? There's no other online public comment.
Okay, last chance for anybody online to let in and know you'd like to speak. And we'll, now we'll close the public comment portion of the agenda and bring it back for discussion by the commission.
So perhaps I can address some of the issues that were raised. I mean, I sort of see two major ones. Ms. McAfee had indicated that the passion for the facilities had been removed. I think we could certainly add some language that sort of puts that passion in there. If she has some suggestive language, I'd be all ears. So we could sort of massage that if that's something the commission would desire. Secondly, the issue of the road. I think that Mr. Thomas had identified, you know, sort of the limitations of how far we go with exploring this road and its consequences with the addendum to the EIR. You know, I certainly don't want to get us into a position where we're bringing up new potential environmental issues that weren't discussed in the general plan EIR. I think I'd defer to counsel on whether the exploratory language is suggested would raise to that level or not. But if it's something that the commission felt that you wanted to include and we, you know, felt that it was not triggering additional environmental considerations, then that's certainly something we could also add. And then whatever kind of tweaking we want to do with the community vision language, I'm okay with that as well. And I think the language that you had discussed previously would work just fine.
Well, we'd need some legal direction as to what, whether language such as "Explore the feasibility of a road" would trigger the requirement.
I think that that language is okay with CEQA. The issue is whether the document would commit the county to a course of action that cannot, prior to exploring the mitigation of environmental impacts. And I don't think with that language in there that we would be committing to building any road. So I think it's a policy call.
Thank you.
And we already have something, CPC 2.4 under circulation, which is increased roadway connectivity. It seems like it actually could be blended into that.
I think that that is, I would not put it in there. I sort of forgot about the concern that Ms. McAfee had raised about egress from the community. And perhaps some language could be put in there regarding, you know, improved emergency egress from the community on four in Oprah and Ferry Road. But I think that a policy regarding access to Maloney's really sort of is separate. That would be my recommendation.
It seems like there's multiple places it would fit in. Because, and this says increased roadway connectivity, and my question is, is that what we're talking about, or are we talking about community connectivity? I mean, are the roadways just a means to connecting the community to other services? Are we talking about circulation patterns that they feel like there's not enough cross streets connecting the major connectors?
That is my, the latter is my understanding. This is in the circulation section of this. And I think that we're looking at, maybe roadway is too narrow. Maybe it needs to be circulation connectivity, would include pedestrian, bicycle, other connectivity. The primary concern, I believe, is roadway connectivity. There's, you know, not a lot of ways to get from one point to another. You know, they're all somewhat circuitous to get from one point of Copperopolis to the other. And so I think it's just, this is giving direction that when, if and when new development comes in, we look at that connectivity. We don't look at it in isolation, say, "Well, how do you circulate within?" How do you connect to other portions of the community? That's the way I perceive that policy. So a little bit of both, yeah.
A little bit of both. And on CPC 4.2, it actually does mention that when considering discretionary permits, that you look at evacuation routes. I think there's a lot here. It seems like a lot of things might have gotten distilled into each of these items. They tried to combine a lot of thoughts.
So let me just ask, this might include the idea of extending, for example, Little John as an exit egress out toward, for example, Highway 108, 120. Does this language kind of take that into account, or am I totally off?
I don't think, not that anything would preclude that. This sort of gets into that issue that I had raised about the other road of, you know, that was something that was clearly discussed during the general plan adoption hearings. And it was not included in the general plan. I think to specifically identify that, you know, sort of pushes us into that next level of, wait a second, we're, you know. But, you know, having a generalized statement of ensuring adequate, you know, emergency egress from the community would not, you know, would certainly be appropriate and would not preclude that in the future.
Yeah, I think the, there should be a mention of the egress possibilities of support the improvement of egress from Copperopolis, particularly in emergency. Exactly where, whether it goes into 2.4 or goes somewhere else, I think that, that's a, I should think a concern that the most members of the community would have.
Yeah. Well, especially after the fire last year.
Yeah, exactly.
Heightened awareness, you might say.
I mean, whether it's a separate provision like CPC 2.6, or whether it's tacked on to something else, I think, you know, as far as exactly what language, I have nothing to suggest right now, but I know you are very talented of-
And my question wasn't to suggest that we make it specific language, but I just wanted to make sure that was in the general terms included, in general terms.
Well, it's certainly stated in Policy 4.2. Whether you think it's appropriate to have it stand out a little bit more, maybe add an additional policy under circulation. I don't see any harm in that. I don't, you know, it's, you know, again, it's something that the community is certainly cognizant of, and we should be as well as we look at, you know, future development within Copperopolis and how can we improve that emergency egress situation.
4.2 is when considering whether or not to approve discretionary permits. And I think as a standalone, the concern about egress, as it stands, as the community stands right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think somewhere other than 4.2, if you're gonna-
Well, I think it fits more in circulation than it does in safety. I mean, they're all interconnected, obviously.
It's kind of investigate, encourage, contemplate ways to improve the, I think it's all part of that whole roadway connectivity and egress. You know, so we want to both connect all the parts of Copperopolis together and get people out of there safely. So I don't know how you, if you combined them or add one more sentence, but just capturing that idea without identifying solutions or saying that the county is going to do this. Just make sure we take advantage of any opportunity.
There is, there is the language that was suggested in another context of "Explore the feasibility of..."
Yeah, but it's not one road or one improvement.
No.
It's a whole web of improvements, right?
Explore the feasibility of improving egress possibilities.
How about adding this language to 2.4? Increase roadway connectivity between parts of Copperopolis and egress from the community, and emergency egress from the community.
I think as long as we don't name the solution specifically, we're probably safe, but I think that's probably something for Brett and Julie to also maybe comment on.
I would suggest that there's probably very similar language already in the general plan.
Yes.
Under the circulation element, under the safety element. But again, you know, this is one of these key components that it won't hurt by, you know, somewhat duplicating that policy here.
But perhaps we should say, "Support the increase." As if this increase is, sounds like a command.
Well, you're right.
Right. Support, encourage, whatever it is.
Increase circulation connectivity.
I don't think there would be any CEQA implications with that language.
Nope.
There's still an opportunity to come back in and do other studies about the circulation that are more specific than we really want to get into right here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm about to suggest meeting rooms be added to one of these provisions. I'm about to suggest that meeting rooms be added to one of these suggestions.
To 5.4, add it to the-
I'm actually a county employee, in any event, I guess.
Thank you.
So should we have a discussion about the operative words, support, work, require, apply? You know, it just, and we really only have the two that are require.
Yeah, so I'd like to bring up that although this becomes a part of the general plan, this is an amendment to the general plan, it's written in the voice of the community members of Copperopolis. And so most of these suggestions could be, should be understood as meaning the Copperopolis community does support blah, blah, blah. Copperopolis community does support this, et cetera. And I, I think having the word "require" in a couple of the provisions raises the question of, well, just what is "require"? "Require" to me-
I would have to disagree with you. This is the county's document. It was informed by the community, but this is what the county will review in its application of its general plan. This is direction to the county. It's not that the community wants to see this. We know the community wants to see this because that's how we got this information. But this is what the county is now saying, "These are our standards. These are our policies and concerns and goals." And so where it says "require," it means the county will require this as it reviews new development or, you know, however this issue might come up. Now, one alternative was that we had if, you know, there may be a situation where it's just not practicable, and that was some language that we had inserted in a number of policies in the general plan because of the concern that, you know, it's too specific, too narrow, that it doesn't provide sort of that range of flexibility that you want to have in a general plan. And a certain instance, it just may not work for whatever reason. You know, I can't think of what that might be right now, but, you know, if we want to keep the word "require" to make it, this is, you know, a directive to county staff, to the Planning Commission, to the board that says, "If we have a project like this, we're going to require these things." But if we want to put that caveat of "we're practicable" in it, it gives the county some flexibility. If you want to have it more general, we'll support that. And, you know, little, you know, sort of like, there's requirement, there's requirement where practical, there's support, and there's maybe consider even below that. You know, those are the policy calls that we're asking you to make today.
Well, I noticed that you read all the other community plans, so "require" didn't make the cut anywhere else. So I would suggest adopting your interpretation of who's talking here, that we change those two "requires" to "support."
It's your call.
Yeah, oh, so I'm looking at 3.5, and we have very specific stormwater management practices adopted by the state. And while recharging groundwater sounds great, I think that it's a little more complicated than just saying, "Let's require that if it's practical." We don't have standards for that, so it seems- We don't have standards for that, so it seems to me like we either want to investigate developing standards, we want to encourage designers to include elements for, you know, but to require, I feel like is gonna maybe get us in trouble with public works.
I'm, you know, new to this. I just wonder what the whole point of this is. I mean, to have any power, does this have any teeth or any money behind it?
Yes, it does. These are the policies that the county will apply when it is looking at capital improvement projects, development proposals, any other kind of planning activity that we go through. We will review these policies, just as we did with the, the Center's Market project before. You know, here are county policies that say, we want to encourage this type of development, we want to impose these kinds of standards. We would look at this, and just as we do for other communities where we have adopted policies, if there's a project in Mountain Ranch, for example, we'll review these policies and say, is this consistent with it? Is a required finding that we have to make, that you have to make in approving projects, that, yes, it's consistent with the general plan. There's a level of flexi, of flexibility with the general plan that, you know, we try to, you know, sometimes have to massage a little bit, but the overall purpose of a community plan would be that development within, or county projects, or programs within Copperopolis would conform with these policies. So, you know, one of the findings we always have to make is, you know, the project is in conformance with the general plan. And our job as planners is to review these policies and all the other policies in the general plan to say, is it consistent with that? Is there some directive that the board adopted that said, you know, with regards to road, with regards to safety, whatever the issue may be, this is the policy of the county. And these are policies that are unique to Copperopolis, that development within Copperopolis, we would review these policies, say, yeah, we sort of review and, you know, tick them off. Okay, we're consistent, and we can document that.
Although, there's not a lot in here that is truly unexplored in the general plan. Most of these concepts are there. I, I think Mr. Copeland mentioned that this was an opportunity for the community to highlight the things that were the most important to them, and maybe give more weight to those in the review of projects, but it's not requiring that the county go out and find funding or do any of these things on behalf of the community. It's more a standard to keep in mind and to check against when you're reviewing a proposed project.
Absolutely.
Or prioritizing projects for a community where money is available.
Also, I think the community plans are useful for people, not, not only developers coming into the community, but just new members of the community, that the community plan can be shown to them as to, this is what the collective interests are of the community. And so, even if a community plan doesn't require particular types of architecture, if, if there are things in the community plan that encourage particular types of architecture, it could have an effect.
It just seems fairly generic. I think everybody in every community would kind of like to explore or have these features added to that. I have just one statement, I'm not sure why Copperopolis area isn't talking about incorporating. I mean, you are a specific community, to get the things done that you want to do, that seems like the way to do it, yeah.
Well, I, I pretty much know why, if they feel anything like Murphy stuff feels. It's a huge undertaking and a big expense, and you take on a lot of responsibility that's very, very difficult to support with a tax base.
Yes.
So.
A couple of very specific things that have been discussed, but I think we should take into account, is that that last sentence in the community vision, of the first paragraph of the community vision, to change it to Lake Tullock should flourish, I think is, is the vision. Will flourish is perhaps overly optimistic.
But that, that is the wording that vision statements use, is that it is, it will, it's, it's not recommending something, it's describing the vision.
Well, that's true.
It should actually say is. Tullock flourishes as a safe and uncongested community attraction, because that's the vision. It's, it's not a will or should.
Well, maybe in this case, because they see it as being congested, that will, you know, maybe is more appropriate than is with this one.
Yeah, I mean, I could fall back from should to, to will, but I, I don't think many people would agree just with the, with that sentence by itself as being inaccurate.
It's not, it doesn't need to be accurate. They're telling you what they.
That's what the community, that's what the county would like to see.
Yeah.
And so, and then if we wanted to add, you know, and improve access to other recreation opportunities at the end of that sentence, I don't see a problem with that either.
Yeah.
So, I, just maybe a poll of the commission to see whether, you know, that change, because maybe go through some of these more policy issues like the should versus require before we actually make a motion and, you know, decide which, what direction you guys are going on that.
The increased opportunity for recreational issues, of course, is something that I think is, is important, and will have a great impact on the community in general. Terms of recreation, obviously, community, community development ultimately, but.
And that wouldn't be, excuse me for interrupting, but that wouldn't necessarily be restricted just to access to Malonees. It could be all other, you know, maybe there are other access points that could be developed on Tullock that would, you know, or there are other parkland or recreational facilities to be developed within the community, and I think that's something that has been, you know, desirable as well.
And I think what got my attention most is the proximity to New Malonees from Copperopolis. And I think it would, I, I would definitely be very much in support of the language that we're talking about, to, that was brought up by, by Mr. Thomas, because I think it would be a lost opportunity if we didn't include it. There's a great potential for, I think for Copperopolis in general, to have that included because should someday we have that access, I think it would provide a lot of benefit to the community. And just to kind of, kind of backtrack to the conversation we had earlier, I stopped going to, taking my boat and my jet skis out to Lake Tullock years ago, particularly when my kids became of age to ride a jet ski by themselves. I said, I ain't, so, so anyway, I just want to.
So if we put that as a vision statement, what would it say? It would say Copperopolis enjoys great access to nearby recreational opportunities, or something, something along those lines.
I think the language that Ms. Rauer came up with was, was good for the vision statement, but I, I think the adding 5.6 would explore the feasibility of a road that, that provide a link to the west shore of New Malonees reservoir is, I mean, as I understand, if that's what you would.
That's exactly what I would like to see, just because I, I live there, and I see, I see the folks there that, you know, want to have more recreational opportunities. You know, I have kids that grew up there, and our grandkids that are growing up there, and, you know, speaking with parents and so forth, they want more to do in Copperopolis, or at least in the immediate vicinity of Copperopolis, so.
So.
That's, that's the whole reason that I am very much in support of this.
So, in order to move forward, can we agree on any edits to the community vision? And they used will throughout that whole section, so it probably is the appropriate term.
Yeah.
And it was written by the community. So, I think adding something that mentions that access or.
So I had written down and improved access to other recreational opportunities, but I think language that.
Improve, I don't think we need to say improved. We want to say it has access, because that's the way they're writing this.
And access to other recreation opportunities?
It starts with Copperopolis will retain its small town. I think, I think putting it in the present tense can be jarring for some people.
But, but that's what they've already chosen, so I think.
Except at the beginning.
All of it, will retain, will remain, will.
Yeah. But that's, just not.
Will support, will encourage, will, whatever, however you want to say it, but I think that recognizing that recreation is more than Lake Tullock is kind of an important part of the vision.
Yeah, I think the language that he proposed is.
Yeah, I'm rereading that, I'm not sure that belongs in that location though. I'm thinking down the second paragraph where it says, community will continue to enjoy golf courses and beautiful open space and parks in Copperopolis. Maybe after that sentence, we can add, or add to that sentence, continue to enjoy, well...
Where are you?
I'm about two-thirds of the way down in the second paragraph of the vision.
Okay, continue and enjoy.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to.
Oh, that's a good spot to try to fit it in.
Yeah.
And access to nearby recreational facilities, whatever.
I'm just concerned about the continue to enjoy sort of implies that it's there already. And so, maybe it should be a separate sentence that just says, you know.
It's the whole problem with vision statements.
Yeah. I don't know, Brett and Julie, any suggestions here?
Well, it will continue to enjoy and look forward to enhance connectivity to other recreation in the area.
How about the community will enhance access to multiple recreational opportunities?
I'm not sure exactly where you're, where, which sentence you're stuck.
After, after parks in Copperopolis where Peter left off, the community will enhance access to multiple recreation activities?
Yeah, will enhance access, I'm not sure about that.
Enjoy, improve.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine, they used it before. Will enjoy, improve, isn't that where I started?
Is it improve or enjoy? What are we doing? Improved or enjoy?
Well, I think enjoy, what, enhanced or improved?
Yeah, I think that's fine, because that implies that there's still room to do more.
So will improve access?
Will enjoy, improve.
Enjoy, improved or enhanced?
I don't care which word you choose.
We'll enjoy improved access to multiple recreational opportunities. Okay.
I, I think, why don't we try to get through all of this and get our comments, and then maybe take a 15-minute break?
No.
You can kind of clean up whatever scribbles you've made and I've made and everyone else has made. Let's.
Okay.
So, if we just start down through the land use goals, I don't think anybody believes that we shouldn't add local in to the CPC 1.3.
Right.
There's good agreement there. Is there anything else anybody sees that they feel needs a little tweaking?
Nope.
Okay. Then look at circulation.
Well, CPC 2.2 suggests replacing require with support.
Right.
Consensus on that? Let's see if you're nodding heads, okay?
Yeah, I agree with requires.
And I think on 2.4, what I have is support increased roadway connectivity between parts of Copperopolis and emergency egress from the community.
That's great.
Great.
And then the same thing on 3.5 as far as support, under open space recreation.
Public facilities, we know we want to add the meeting rooms under 5.4. Which every community wants. And then adding as either 5.6 or 5.7, the explore the feasibility of a connecting.
The language it was suggesting was a road that would provide a link.
Explore the feasibility of a connecting link.
Okay.
From Copper, Copperopolis to the west shore of New Malonees. I think that's pretty much exactly where I was supporting.
It was a road to Malone, to providing link.
I would say not just road though, because don't you want it to be potentially pedestrian paths, bicycle paths?
Do you have a connecting link?
Yeah.
Connecting link.
Although it sounds like a road is what they want, because they want to drag those boats there.
Okay.
Then the Yosemite College District, we already talked about. Anything else in the economic development section? So, do you feel like you need a couple minutes to?
I think I've got it all.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, so then maybe we should.
We have an input from you.
Yes.
Come on up.
Thank you. We have a very bad traffic situation with the O'Berns Ferry Bridge. It's Calaveras County's ownership. Calaveras County just replaced a guardrail for $153,000, and that's probably three or four times a year. If we're going to be throwing pies to the sky with roads to New Malonees through BLM land and so forth, I think we should at least address a concept of a new bridge rather than being hidden or in between the lines of egress and improvements in traffic circulation. So, on this offering, that if we are going to do something like this new road to Malonees, gosh darn it, we, we need some action on this bridge. And I, my hope that after the Highway 4 corridor is done, that the county starts putting away monies for a new bridge. monies for a new bridge at O'Burns Ferry. Thank you.
Thank you. So perhaps under circulation, it's been brought up several times, investigate options for replacement or improvements to the O'Burns Ferry Bridge.
Or explore the feasibility.
Yeah.
Question.
Sure, come on up.
Russ Thomas, again, I feel like that there's an echo in this room. I'm reminded of my, the time that I initiated a study for that bridge realignment. The county spent $50,000 with StanTech Consulting to, as you frequently have to do, you have to look at different options. And there was a preferred one that would put a bridge slightly upstream from the existing one and would cross over, much higher than that, but it would cross over from the dwelling side and then kind of contour around. But anyway, that work is done and I'm sure that somebody could find it if they started looking for it. And I, I'm a little thinking that leaving this, the wording into the Tullock will flourish as a safe and uncongested community attraction might in the future add additional weight and argument toward, if it's going to be like Tullock, be uncongested, that some other option can, feasibility of another option can be more easily approached.
Peter's typing something or looking at something.
Well, I'm bringing up the general plan, the circulation, circulation element, just to see what it says and whether or not improvements to the O'Burns Ferry Bridge is already incorporated into the overall, you know, capital improvement plan for the county, the long-term circulation plan.
There's also a whole bridge replacement and improvement plan because there's money for that every cycle. I don't know where it is on that list. I'm sure it's included.
But a specific mention of the O'Burns Ferry Bridge in here would enhance that.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, we're recognizing what the community's looking for.
So the circulation element contains three exhibits. One that shows existing circulation system, one that shows the build-out and the effect of that on the county roads. And then the third one is a map showing where improvements are necessary to support the general plan. And it shows O'Burns Ferry from historic Copperopolis all the way to the county line as being a road that is upgrade road to add, well, it's just add passing zone. So it doesn't say anything on that as far as the bridge. I think that the, while certainly any improvements to the bridge would be consistent with the goals and policies of the circulation plan, the circulation element, I don't know there's anything in there that specifically identifies O'Burns Ferry as a priority or as something that's absolutely required. So I don't think that, I guess what I'm saying is that including something in this plan, in this element, in the community plan is probably, you know, beneficial to that effect. It doesn't necessarily prioritize, I think, you know, as, as the board adopts its, you know, its capital improvement plans, it makes its priorities. And there's like a bridge replacement program, there's the road improvement, you know, there's a variety of different public works directed improvement projects, improvement programs that they have. I don't want to be in a position where saying, we're putting this on top. But I think that if we sort of highlight it here, it does raise the awareness that for Copperopolis, this is a key element of, you know, improving safety, improving circulation, so that when the board does consider, how are we going to spend our transportation funds, you know, in the next five years, that's considered overall.
Would you have suggested language?
Explore the feasibility of improving O'Burns Ferry Bridge as CPC 2.6?
Sounds good to me.
I think anything that says, look into the replacement or improvement of O'Burns Ferry Bridge makes sense.
That language sounds fine.
I'm okay with that.
Mr. Thomas, thank you for the explore the feasibility catch.
Okay. Anything else on the goals and policies before we talk about the reso?
I have a couple of corrections that I would like to introduce on the third whereas. I'd like it to read, whereas this general plan amendment was referred to applicable California Native American tribes as required by County Code 173606OB and California Government Code 65352.3.
Can you say that again?
And no request for consultation was received. Wait, I'm sorry. Were given an opportunity to consult with the county and no request for consultation was received.
Perfect.
And then on page three, item two, there's a spelling error, should complement with an E, not an I.
There. Hopefully he's doing it.
Three or four. One.
That's a good catch. They were complimenting.
Yes. It did come up in my spell check, so I thought it was right. Thank you, Tim, for catching that.
I feel like it should be...
One thing I would suggest is that we attach as exhibits to our resolution, the actual community plan and the addendum to the EIR, so that it's clear that these are the specific documents that we are recommending the board adopt.
And as kind of part of that thought is we really could use that Copperopolis community area map to include a legend and some labels of the key areas like town center, because if there's nothing on it besides the roads, there's really nothing for somebody to orient themselves with who's not familiar with.
Can I ask about the attachment? I'm just thinking about our IQM2 software and how we're going to get the entire NAGDEC into our, into the reso. But can't we incorporate it by reference? It's in the record.
Well, I certainly think that the, that the community plan itself
Sure.
Should be an exhibit.
Okay, that's easy enough. But I think the Sequa document, we have software that might make that tough with the formatting. I don't know.
Oh, really?
I'm just suggesting.
I, I, just the thought that we're asking to approve...
It's not very big. We can try.
Yeah, I mean, this is not big.
It's really, this whole packet is pretty small, so...
Yeah. It's just attachments to attachments in the, in the, the computer program we use for board packages. Challenging, let's say. But I think you're right, we probably should certainly... I think that under the, be it therefore resolved, we could reference an amendment to the community planning element to add description of policy to the Copperopolis community and then just
Do we use the word attachment in the staff report so that there should be exhibit instead?
Or exhibit, maybe exhibit rather than attachment.
I don't know which is, which we're using in the staff report.
I don't think that we used it either in the staff report.
Okay.
It's just, well, let's see, no, it is, attachment one is the draft community plan.
Okay.
Attachment two, it's the stat, these are attachments of the staff report, so we can call it whatever we want to. Attachment to the...
Well, I just think it's important that this, but what we are recommending that the board...
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I think that that, and I think that, you know, the, the addendum to the EIR, you know, that can be just incorporated by reference. I don't think we need to attach it necessarily. But I would say we call the plan attachment one to this resolution, and that clearly shows that is what you are recommending to the board.
So can I, so that it would be, be it therefore resolved, and at the last sentence, we would say, for the Copperopolis community, and then in parentheses, attachment one, based on the following findings, and then the first finding, after we do the state clearinghouse number, we would do comma, which is incorporated by reference, comma, and that way we are in, we are sure that the EIR or the addendum is incorporated by reference.
That's what we're...
So we could add the incorporated by reference to the template for these, for the Sequa piece. And then there can be a part of the template. For, okay. All right.
The other questions I have is, have to do with the other government code provisions that require opportunities for involvement. And it seems to me that in addition to the statement that's already in here about the Indian tribes, that we should have, show our compliance with government code section 65351
Do you want another whereas? Is that what you're...
Yeah, I would say.
Whereas the planning department complied with government code 65351 and 65352? Oh, sorry. In soliciting public input or something? Isn't that what it's all about?
It will comply in, soliciting input in conformance with...
Yeah, blah, blah, blah. Right.
Assuming that we did.
Well, if you get to take the last 10 years, we, I think we've more than complied.
This is not something I came up with out of the blue, I'd think.
We read it in the...
Read it in a memo or...
Yeah, we read it in Julie's memo.
Which you're not supposed to say. Whereas the planning department solicited input in conformance with government code sections 65351 and 65352 and...
My golly, I think we've got this.
I think so, too.
I forget, Peter, whether we're still waiting on specific language for you or...
I think we have it.
You've got it?
Yes.
I think we finished them all.
I think so.
Okay, so are we ready then to hear the recommendation or is there anything anybody else wants to offer? Any last minute thoughts from the audience? Nope?
All right. So staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2025-003 as amended, recommending that the board of supervisors approve the addendum to the EIR, find that the project is also exempt from Sequa pursuant to section 15183 of the Sequa guidelines, and adopt the proposed general plan amendment as amended, or adopt the proposed general plan amendment adding a description and policies for the Copperopolis community as amended to the community planning element of the general plan.
I shall soon move. I second it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Yea. Opposed.
Okay. So, so three, one, zero. We're missing or absent somebody.
All right. So this will be scheduled for the board of supervisors as soon as I can get the board packet put together.
Wonderful.
Hopefully within about a month.
And I just think the planning commission should express appreciation to all the members of the community who've been working on this for so long, and I hope not too many are frustrated with how it's turned out.
Yeah, yes. I'm thrilled to move it on to the board of supervisors after all these years. Okay. Informational items. None? Commissioner reports.
I just, I would just ask whether, when our next meeting, when, when do you have something for us for our next meeting?
In regards to...
Well, it's, are we going to have a regular meeting of the second week in February?
I believe we do. Yeah. But Annette, do you have any?
It's not time to send out notices yet.
Yeah, I, I believe we have a couple of, of projects in the, in the kitchen, so to speak, that'll be spooled up for it, yes.
And I'm wondering if we need to appoint a chair and vice chair at our next meeting. So we need to get that on the agenda, right? Okay, thanks.
I guess I do have one little announcement. This is my swan song for the planning commission. I have a couple of, I get to take this to the board and I get to participate in the study session workshop on the short-term vacation rental ordinance, and then I get to return to the delightful position of retirement.
More Wednesday nights.
I'd like to personally thank Peter for all of his help in bringing me on board and all of his mentoring and all of his institutional knowledge and specifically his ethics. And I just really appreciate everything he's done for me, and it's been fantastic, and thank you, Peter.
Well, I'm happy to be leaving the department in good hands.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you very much.
Are we really done with everything on your list?
No, but...
The, the list will live on.
Thank you, Peter. And I just wanted to say, Catherine's gone, but hopefully she's listening, that the report for senders was really great, really complete.
Including the environmental document.
Yeah, very. Okay, planning director report.
A couple of things that are coming up that the planning commission could look forward to, we're certainly going to be getting the greenhouse gas plan relaunched and refitted and moving forward, and so that'll be coming your way in the near future, and also our oak resources ordinance as well, you'll be seeing that in the future. Those will probably be, more than likely, the next two larger long-range planning projects that you will see before you, so that's, that's, that's on the horizon.
Can't wait.
I just tossed all my scribbles on the greenhouse gas, other than my digital ones, but my just little scribbly things, thinking, I don't know, how long is it going to be before this ever comes back? By that time, I'll need to rethink the whole thing anyway.
We've been going through the comments and really trying to strategize on what's the best path forward, and really our, our available resources, and whether we need a substantial on-call contract to finish off the document, per the comments that were received. So we're doing an extensive research through the comments, and going to propose a path, and going to consult with county council, and then we'll, we'll move forward, but some of, some of the comments were fairly substantial, would require quite a bit of additional analysis and expense, so that's what we're, that's what we're grappling with right now.
Yep. Okay, something to look forward to. Anyone else? Then we are adjourned at five to nine. Except that that's the wrong clock, I'm going, wow, how is that possible? 11:13. I felt like, wow, we've had a time warp. 11:13, it's getting worse, it's further off than it was this morning.